For tonight's Board of Trustees meeting on July 10th, if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with public comment. If anybody would like to come on up, please just list your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Gerald Brody, 3020 West Ridge Court. I'd like to bring to your attention missed garbage pickup last week by our new service provider, Priority Waste. Our regularly scheduled day for trash pickup is Tuesday. Because the Fourth of July was on Tuesday, our pickup should have been on Wednesday of last week. On Wednesday, our recycling was picked up, but not our garbage. Because this was a new provider, I emailed them Wednesday night that the entire Hickory Ridge development, there's 19 homes, did not have their garbage picked up. Thursday morning, I followed up my email with a phone call to them to let them know that it had not been picked up, and I was assured that it would be picked up that day. At noon that day, my wife spoke to Kim at Township Public Services to let her know. She called Priority Waste and again was told it would be picked up by the end of the day. I called Kim at 3:00 to let her know it still had not been picked up. She called them again, and our garbage was not picked up on Thursday. Friday morning, the residents of Hickory Ridge Village received an email from our property management company that the garbage would be picked up by the end of the day. I called our management company at 3:00 to let them know it had not been picked up that day. As of a few minutes ago, when I left to come here to this meeting, it still had not been picked up a week later. During this time, all of the residents had left their garbage out for pickup. There was no way I was going to put rotting smelling garbage that had been sitting out back in my garage, as flies were swarming around it, and I presumed disgustingly enough maggots hatching inside of it. Sunday, I was on Corton between Telegraph and Loser heading eastbound, and there I saw garbage left out that again had not been picked up. In the past, GFL would pick up as late as, I remember sometimes 8:00, 8:30 in the evening, and if they couldn't pick up that day, they picked up first thing the following morning before advancing to that day's scheduled pickup. Evidently, Priority Waste does not view Bloomfield Township as a priority. Even allowing for first week jitters, I understand circumstances can arise. Perhaps they were understaffed to complete the task. However, what I feel we should not accept is, one, their lack of responsiveness scheduling additional manpower or overtime to get it done before moving on to their next scheduled day in route. Two, what struck me from business perspective even worse was their obvious middle or senior management level incompetence to not promptly act to correct this problem. And three, worst of all, their complete lack of professionalism by lying to all parties involved, telling us that it would be promptly taken care of. You only get one chance to make a first impression, and boy, did they make a first impression. As a former business owner, I would know within the first few days or week if the person I hired was going to work out or not. I think Priority Waste has a long way to go to make this work out for them. And lastly, because last week's garbage is not going to be picked up until tomorrow, our regularly scheduled day with this week's garbage, or I hope they're going to pick it up, I would expect the township at a minimum to get us, the residents of Hickory Ridge Village and anyone else affected by this, credited for last week's pickup that we've already paid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eileen Warshaw. This is my husband Derek. We live 5438 St. Martin's Court. We've been there for 25 years. I'm handing out a packet just to let you know that I am proposing an amendment to the fireworks ordinance in the township. The last two pages of the packet have sections from St. Clair Shores ordinance, because the front page that you see with the 50, 48 boxes of fireworks is what gets shot off across Corton at my house every year. And it gets bigger every year. So what I did this year was went to the police department and said, the Friday before, and I said, "What can I do?" And they said, "Why don't you go talk to your neighbor?" And I said, "I'm not approaching anyone, thank you very much." So I left a little note, which I put in your packet, which was very nice, and at the end said, "Look, I hope you enjoy your celebration, but not at my expense. Shoot these off at your own property, not mine." And they did not. So I did call the police, and the officers came out, wonderful young gentlemen. And I have a report number. When they came out, I said, "Please come to the garage," because I was standing in the garage to make sure that my house wasn't catching on fire. And when the young men came up, they had to duck into my garage because things were falling on their head. And I said, "Where's your hats? Don't officers have hats anymore?" I said, "No." So they came in my garage and saw that my property was just getting pelted with fireworks. And normally, they would just, you know, say, "This is what our ordinance is. They can light them off on private property." But this was too much. So they actually gave me the report number, and they said that their body cam has great pictures of all the damage to my driveway. So then there's a couple pictures I put in. I have 30 or 40, but the top of my husband's car, the driveway. So what I want is for the township to enact an ordinance that adopts some of St. Clair Shores provisions. Robert Erie is their attorney, great guy, I'm sure. And this is available online, so it includes that excessive use is not allowed, and that that includes the continuous and intermittent ignition of fireworks continuing for more than 20 minutes. These folks were doing it for an hour and 20 minutes. That no person shall individually or in concert damage, cause damage to any private or public property. I would like that one adopted. And lastly, no consumer fireworks shall be ignited, launched, or discharged within 200 feet of a residential building or vehicle. That hopefully will also stop these folks. It is not a resident, by the way, who buys all these. The gentleman told the police officers that his sister lives at the house, and he just brings all this stuff over. So he offered to come and clean up my property this year, and he came three days afterward with a couple of young men to pick up the stuff all over my driveway, front yard, backyard. It had already rained, so a lot of the stuff was off the car. But he looked at me and had no awareness whatsoever and said, "We put on quite a show, don't we?" Okay, I'm done. I just want something that protects people, their animals. My next door neighbor's property was actually worse than mine as far as the litter, and I see it as, since it's coming across Corton, there should be something that can be done. Like, you should not be able to shoot these things across Corton onto your neighbor's property and damage it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Send me the public comment. Thank you, everybody who shared with us today. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment. And next, we'll go into the board minutes of June 26. We've all had a chance to look them over. Unless there's anything to change, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by treasurer keeps, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That does pass. Next, we'll go into the closed session board minutes of June 26. Those have been passed around, those are available. Unless there's any changes, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. So next, we have considering approval of a raffle license for, is it Cap'n Conquer? Cap'n Conquer, ink. So we have Clerk Brook will be presenting, and we also have, if you'd like to come up, is it Joanne Novas?
Great. So, accordance with the requirements of state law and their local procedures, included behind item number four are the, each of the matters required for a raffle bingo millionaire party license. If the board agrees, then this matter ultimately goes to the state of Michigan, which issues the license itself. The entity is the holder of the license, and they're a Bloomfield Township entity. That's why they're here today, even though the, I believe the event will be in West Bloomfield itself.
Correct.
But this is the proper form for it, because the entity applying, Cap'n Conquer, is registered here in Bloomfield Township. So, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And if there's anything you wanted to add about your organization and the event, we'd love, happy to hear it.
This is our third annual fundraiser. We do a golf outing, and this year, we decided to try to do a raffle just to make more money, raise more money for people that are going through chemo and hoping that they don't lose their hair. There's a way of doing it now, and it's called Cold Caps. My daughter used it five years ago, saved her hair, and it was a real, really made the experience of, you know, having cancer much more bearable for her. And after she finished, it's a patient pay process. Insurance companies don't recognize it yet, but we're going to be working on that. That's our next step. And she wanted to pay it forward. At that time, she was in contact with Ally, and Ally had used these, you know, she wanted to participate also. She had also used Cold Caps. So, and then another woman came into the board, my other two daughters. So we have a team now of three, well, four, because Molly joined, four cancer victims that used it, and were all successful, and then my two daughters. And they've reached out to many, many women. They raised fun, women and men, but it's really only the women so far that have been using the caps for us. And we funded for them, and so this is our fundraiser, and we're just hoping to be able to raise more money this year with the raffle tickets. And thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
No, just a wonderful cause.
Oh, it's amazing.
Really give you a lot of credit and your family, and wish you good luck with this.
Yeah, it's amazing, because not only, you know, we're bringing it to the attention of cancer victims, but so many providers in our community, doctors, nurses, hospitals, knew nothing about it. So Cap'n Conquer's gone out and educated. They've brought now, there's a machine at Henry Ford Hospital, and U of M, which is amazing. And truthfully, our next step is to try to have the insurance companies recognize it so it's part of their fee code and that it'll be available to more people. Anyways, thank you.
Yeah, what a wonderful fundraiser. My son just had a friend that, I had not heard of it till recently, but she was just getting over cancer, and they had, he and his wife had donated for her Cold Cap, and I was like, "What's that?" And this is just a couple months ago.
Isn't that amazing? I know, it's really wonderful.
So, what a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
I appreciate all your effort.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't need a motion.
Well, yeah, unless there's any other comments. Is there a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Motion by treasurer keeps, support by trustee Barnett, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck on the fundraiser.
Tom will help get you the certificate tomorrow.
Okay.
So next, we have consider approval of the 2023 High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Subrecip Ban Agreement. We have Chief Gallagher here today.
This is a quick one. Each year, we do a renewal for the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area reimbursement grant between, and it's an agreement between Oakland County and Bloomfield Township Police Department. This money is the reimbursement for our member that's assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team, the overtime costs, or they fund some of the costs. This year, the grant is for $5,700, which I think is an increase of about $700 from last year. I think last year was about $5,000. So we are looking for a resolution to approve the renewal of the HITEA grant.
Any questions, Chief? I look for a motion. So moved. Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That passes.
All right.
So next, we have consider approval of the interlocal agreement between Oakland County Animal Shelter and the charter township of Bloomfield.
This is also just a renewal, and I'll start off by saying, since I've been in an administrative role, I don't think we've ever had anybody pay these costs because we have our own animal shelter. But we do have an interlocal agreement with the county in the event that one of our residents takes an animal to the county, to the shelter of Oakland County, they do charge the resident or the municipalities or townships because we have our own animal shelter. We have such a good working relationship with Oakland County that we kind of do a give and take with them on many services. And so, again, we rarely ever use this, but it is something that they require. So we're just looking for an amendment with this. They did have an increase substantially in a couple of the costs. Reading through some of the other packet information, it was because, one of the reasons for their increases was because in the past, they've used inmates or trustees, trustees to clean the shelter and to do that, and now they have to pay a company due to COVID restrictions and things of that nature during that time. So some of their costs did increase. Again, we rarely if ever have to pay anything because of the cost, because of our own shelter and the relationships and the partnerships we have with them. So just looking for a resolution to renew this agreement. This was, I'm sorry, this was reviewed and approved by Dirk.
Unless there's any questions, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee, almost, sorry, Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. I guess I expected animalized.
You expected it.
I was expecting it.
Oh, you were looking for it.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, that passes. Next, we have presentation and consider approval of the site plan of the operation between the state of Michigan and the charter township of Bloomfield Police Department for the Secretary of Defense Excess Personal and Property Transfer Program.
Say that again.
So this is what they call the 1033 program. This is something a lot of law enforcement agencies around us do. The 1033 program, or the Law Enforcement Support Office program, less always, it's a US government's defense logistics agencies program that allows the transfers of excess defensive, Department of Defense property or equipment to be transferred to federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies. This equipment that would otherwise be destroyed is transferred to the agencies for use, but is not able to be purchased or sold by the agencies. So if we were to take some type of equipment from them, we could not sell it on our own. If it's returned, we either have to destroy it at their recommendation, or it's returned to the department if we have no longer use for it. There's a ton of different eligible items, but they include clothing, office supplies, tools, rescue equipment, vehicles, and small arms. Since the program's inception, there's been less than 2% of the equipment transferred, our small arms, and less than 1% are tactical vehicles. There's more than 8,800 law enforcement agencies that have enrolled in the program across the country. In order for us to see what equipment is available for transfer, we have to set up an account with them, with the Department of Defense. A lot of the equipment that we would look for if there was, is the tourniquets and medical equipment that we supply each one of our officers, our go-bags, which are, in the event of an active shooter or active incident, we have personal bags we can throw on in addition to our gear, that either medical supplies or additional equipment we could use in those situations. But there's also things of riot gears, helmet, things of that nature, that we don't typically need on an everyday basis, so we don't often purchase them, but if we can get them at the, from the Department of Defense. In full transparency, this program took a little bit of a hit under the Obama administration during the armored vehicles and the small agencies who are of, you know, one or two officers, but they have a tank, right? That is not something Bloomfield Township is going to be in the need for. We have Oakland County and their equipment that's eligible for that, so that's not something we would do. In the packet, I don't have it with me, I don't think. I included for you, in your packet, was just like Troy and some of the other agencies around us and what type of equipment they've got. And I think Troy in the past got a pickup truck that they use for their service aides and things of that nature. So we're just looking for approval from the board to go ahead and enroll in this program and see what equipment's out there, and if we are ever in need of it, to be able to use it.
Any questions for Chief?
I would just say, I appreciate you bringing up with regards to the armored vehicle, because I just, you know, as an everyday citizen, nothing to do with being an elected official, I always found it a bit unnerving to see this, you know, type of a vehicle in a, you know, everyday residential setting. So I understand the purpose of why the government runs the program, and I guess every police department has their, you know, needs, but I'm happy to hear that you don't anticipate that being a need of the township and...
No.
Yeah.
They want to give me an incident command vehicle, that's okay. But I just, we have Oakland County's, we have such a great partnership with Oakland County who has those items, and Troy, maybe some of these departments who have full-time, or not full-time SWAT teams, but special weapons and tactics teams who respond to barricaded gunmen and would handle those situations with us and for us, they have that equipment, so we would rely on them. It's not something we want to park in our, and drive around Telegraph, so.
Do you have an idea of what type of equipment might be available that you're interested in?
It would be more those, the response equipment we can do, the tourniquets. We are in need of new riot and helmet gears in the event that we ever need it. Again, those are things we would have on hand as equipment for an immediate response with OCTAC, and I know you'll hear me talk a lot about OCTAC, but OCTAC has our mobile field force responders who are fully equipped and all that gear. So just to have some of that stuff to maintain until that team were to arrive is stuff that we would look for. If they offered vehicles that could be shared amongst, you know, us in the fire department for incident command type vehicles, that, I mean, I would be all ears on that. Stuff that would benefit our community and what we're going to use on a more frequent basis, not one time every five years. So.
There's no more questions, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Murray, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That does pass.
All right.
So next, we have Officer Nick Soli up for the, consider the approval of the reimbursement grant agreement for the Bloomfield Township Animal Shelter to purchase new cat cages.
Chief, catch his breath for a moment before he comes back up.
You're going to be the honorary name of that. You have done so much in getting resources for that building.
I can't take credit. I'm very fortunate they reach out to me. One, thank you for having me. Two, before I get started, while I have the microphone, I wanted to thank trustee Faqui and trustee Murray. Both of them came out to our youth academy, Regional Police Youth Academy, two weeks ago to volunteer, which was awesome to see them out there. We put them in the driver's seat and let some of these teenagers pretend to pull them over, and they got just a tiny sliver of what we usually get. I did not know trustee Murray was such a good actor, but we do appreciate their help, and we put them with some of our officers to put them at ease, but also to build some new relationships of officers they might not see. So thank you very much.
Well, I meant to tell Chief when I came in tonight how much fun that was. I don't know, I think Stephanie enjoyed it too, but I was paired with Cody Dennison, who I met when he got sworn in last year. I didn't know him. By the end of the day, we were like, he was, he was so funny, and he was doing crazy stuff like jumping out of the car. And I felt bad not trying to do too much for those poor kids, but I had no idea. You said, "I don't need help, just come on and see what we're doing." And then you put me in the car, and I was like, "Uh-oh." And we had a blast. It was fun.
Well, I do appreciate it, and the police department appreciates the support, and it's nice for the other departments that were with us to see that we do have not only our community's support, but our board's support. I'm in front of you today asking for approval on a reimbursement grant. This grant was applied for and accepted given township supervisor's signature. The amount is for $12,497.40. That strange amount comes to us based off a quote we got in May of this year from Shoreline. That is for six new cat cages. It would totally remodel our current cat room. These cages are what I like to consider luxury feline condominiums. They kind of have an eating area, a living area, and a bathroom area, so they're not sharing that certain area for sanitary purposes. They're a little more reinforced with the doors, so we're not just going in there. It could help our volunteers and our workers over there from being bitten, and it will give them a little more room. That quote, like I said, came to us in May. That's a little high, but that is the exact amount that we were approved for. Reason being is their quote did include tax. So that tax of $700 would drop off, and again, it would be a reimbursement amount for the full amount of that. Contract is very similar to the other two I brought to you. I believe the township attorney has looked it through with no problems. And if we went forward with these, we would go ahead and purchase them, be reimbursed for them. No install needed, we would install them in-house. I do have exact dimensions, if you were to need them, in my quote, and these are the same cat kennels, cages that are used at Oakland County, which is where we got the idea to go with this company and these certain cages. Questions?
Any questions for Officer Soli?
No.
Is there a motion?
I would love to make the motion, and I have to come over and see the new cat, don't call cat cages, at the shelter that I volunteer, I call them cat condos.
That's what I was told.
I have to come over, I have to come over and see all you've been doing at the shelter, and I promise I will, and I would love to make the motion.
I think this is a great step. While this company is a nonprofit and wishes to stay anonymous, they've done a lot for us in really revamping that shelter. It looks totally different. If you have a chance to come through, our community come through. We've redone that front office, helped on grants. The temperature in there due to HVAC on grants is great, and this will be kind of a final step to get everything up to date and not so much 1970s. So it will be nice.
And we have a motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by treasurer keeps, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That does pass. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have presentation of the Flock license plate reader cameras, and we have Chief Gallagher again.
And Lieutenant Pazuti is going to join me, because he did a lot of the work on this. So I included in your board packets the Flock presentations and then some other information that was more for your reading material to understand it. So the Flocks are, they're called Flock, that's the company the majority of Oakland County uses. They're automatic license plate reader cameras. And what they are for a police agency is a force multiplier. These cameras have helped solve, and they're just the new technology and the new way to try to help us solve crime, and majority of property crime is what we're seeing in here. So I didn't think I should take away from Flock's presentation and create our own, because they are very transparent about what they're about, and they've really taken the considerations of the ACLU and other, what people would have thought Big Brother accusations, and put it into their own presentation. So it really takes away to use anything other than theirs, because they really have addressed many of those concerns. So the question would be, why Flock of community? And they have a simple mission, that it's to eliminate crime and shape a safer future together. And they are, that is reality of that. And I'll explain a couple cases where, or at least one where we used it more recently on a school incident, but there are some other cases on here that will be national cases that were solved, mostly homicide or kidnapping cases. But I just watched before I came here, the case, unfortunately, of the two-year-old out of Lansing last week, which is just disgusting. But you can hear, they released the 21 minutes of body cameras, and you'll, they mentioned some of these technologies in their conversations. Again, I don't know what route they played in the whole investigation, I won't speak to that, but they met, the officers amongst talking to each other, talk about some of those things. So what we currently, what we observe in the current reality is that the police head count is on the decline. We still have current six openings. Four of those openings are the ones you, the board has approved us to bring back. Two of those are still just openings from retirements, with a possible third with somebody leaving soon, possibly go federal. Crime is on the rise, that's, property crime especially is on the rise here in Bloomfield Township. We are probably pushing close to over 50 stolen cars this year alone, since April, or since January 1. And there's trust needed more than ever. The opportunity is that, again, I mentioned it's a force multiplier. It's not something we, that we can take an officer off the streets for. This is more information to provide our officers, and really during a proactive investigation is what we hope to use it for. It captures and distributes objective evidence right to the user, which is us, and it engages our partner with solutions to solve crime. Crime is hard to solve, we know that, property crime especially. Pre-COVID, you didn't have to worry about too many people wearing masks, committing larcenies at night. Now they all wear a mask, and good luck identifying somebody from here. 50% of the national average clearance rate for violent crime is way too low, so, and obviously 15% for property crimes. The key to all that, though, is that 70% of the crimes, according to the International Association Chiefs of Police, involve some type of vehicle that's being used. And we see that here, the majority in Bloomfield Township, mainly because of the thoroughfares we have. 75 Woodward Loser, which a lot don't consider a thoroughfare, but it's used for that purpose, and obviously Telegraph is our main thoroughfare. So how does this technology work? It's really a vehicle fingerprint, right? It's not facial recognition, it doesn't tell you who's in a vehicle, it doesn't give us that information. It's simply a fingerprint of a vehicle, of the rear of the vehicle, which captures the license plate and possibly any other identifying markers. And I was talking to Treasure Keeps about it, like, let's just pretend this car that's sitting here didn't have a license plate on it because it was removed to commit crimes. If it had, what I use for him, a Michigan State Spartan logo on the back window, we could put that as an identifier in an area that, we know we had a gray car with a Michigan State logo on the back of it, you know, could we find cars that were in the area at that time and help us identify a pattern of where that car may have been? There is a cost to each camera, obviously. The cost just recently went up, and we'll get to that in a minute. Again, I talked about it. There's no, no people, no facial recognition, and no traffic enforcement. It can only be used as a tool to solve crime or fight crime. It cannot be used as an everyday thing. Who did that, you know, over on Telegraph? And it has to include some type of crime. So it's license plate recognition. It gathers objective evidence and facts about the vehicle, not the people. That still revolves on the officers to build probable cause or reasonable suspicion to stop a vehicle. It alerts police of wanted vehicles. So how it works is if I'm driving down Telegraph Road and I hit an area where there's a slice and plate reader camera, it would alert to our dispatch that, hey, a wanted vehicle, a stolen vehicle, whatever it's flagged in, a felony vehicle, just entered Bloomfield Township. And again, it would be wherever this camera is located. They would then broadcast that information out to an officer. Those officers would then be on the lookout for that car. If they spot that car, and let's say it's a wanted vehicle for a wanted person, not even a stolen car, but it's just a wanted vehicle, or for a wanted person, they still have to establish probable cause or reasonable suspicion to stop that car. The person behind the wheel of that car must match or at least attempt resemble the person that's really wanted. And so there's some things that have to happen in the dispatch center relatively simultaneously to be giving us real-time information. If not, we're not going to make that stop on that car and pass it on to another agency while we build that information. It adheres to all the state laws. So Flock has been working with Michigan State Police and many other agencies around the country, and you'll see here just in a moment how many people around us actually have it. What it isn't is facial recognition. I mentioned that. Not tied to personal identified information. We don't get names, addresses, anything off there. It's strictly the vehicle. It's not used for traffic enforcement, so we can't use it if there's, you know, we can use it for a hit-and-run accident, but we couldn't use it if somebody, you know, called in and said, "Yeah, this car was speeding down Telegraph today," and they were road raging us. Well, if there was no crime with that, we could not just use this camera or identifiers for that. The big one was that this data is not stored beyond 30 days. They automatically delete it every 30 days, and that's through Flock. That's their requirement. That's the agreement we sign on with. So if we don't establish, if we have an investigative case through our detective bureau, let's say a home invasion, if we don't establish some type of lead within that 30 days, and we, on day 31, we, oh, guess what? We got a car? We can't go back and try to find that, where that area was. So it gives us real-time crime alerts. It increases our clearance rates, and it increases our ability to hopefully identify these repeat offenders that are coming into the township and stealing our cars. Knock on wood, we've been kind of committing other crimes. I don't want to label certain crimes out there. And then they also act as a deterrent. When people, when the bad guys are starting to get to the idea that police agencies and communities are putting up additional technology, they're staying away. So the transparency and accountability, one thing that they do have is, with the service, is they have a transparency portal so that it's community-facing. So on our website, under our transparency page, we can list this transparency portal, and it will tell our community exactly, you know, how many hits were into the township, how many times we used it for searching, and what that front-facing is, so that there is still some of that accountability that it's not being used just, you know, without a reason. There has to be a reason. We talked about the short retention period, which is only 30 days. It takes out the human bias out of the crime by detecting objective data and detecting events that are objectively illegal, stolen vehicles, right? If we have it in a location where a stolen vehicle, and we can act on that, hopefully we can, one, recover somebody's property. In the event, which is happening quite frequently, that these vehicles don't stop for us, we're able to then label those vehicles as wanted, and other jurisdictions will be alerted that that vehicle just entered their city or not. It really, hopefully tailors down some of the police pursuits because eventually we're going to know what area these cars are going into. Any investigative search, a reason is required for an audit trail. Again, they go through the not facial recognition because that was what, there was a big push at that several years ago when this first came out. And obviously, I said, no personal information's on there other than the vehicle data. So it's widely adopted in Michigan. Ryan, we reached out to some area agencies around us. A lot of the agencies started like we are. We're going to ask for, in a minute, you'll hear why, we're going to ask for about nine cameras and what Flock's recommendation was. But it's widely adopted in Michigan, and I'll show a map here in a minute. Actually, I can pull up the map right now. What you'll see on this map, I hope you can see it all on here, I'll make it bigger here, is that, ignore the red in the center because that is Flock's recommendation to Bloomfield Township. They recommended, based on their analysis of us, that we have 31 cameras. $3,000 a camera, that's quite a bit of money. And it's, that would be a reoccurring cost every year. Now, we've identified some on there without them knowing exactly where Bloomfield Township and some of that information, some of those that can be eliminated. But what you see in the purple or the pinkish-purple-ish up there, the magenta, is, that's what West Bloomfield currently has in their city. The south end in the green is what Southfield currently has. They are in the process of getting several more. That was their trial. The city of Troy is all the blue that they currently have. Auburn Hills is all the yellow, and the dark brown is all Oakland County Sheriff's Department. So there's a really big gap where we are with us in Birmingham, which Birmingham has approved theirs as well now. So you can kind of get an idea, and I can zoom in a little bit more on us. This map doesn't make it real easy because of all the terrain that it's showing, and just their recommendations. Again, there's some that we already know would not be beneficial or probably worthy of us. One of the nice parts is, is, again, some of these can be eliminated as well when we start looking at expanding in the future because other towns, other cities are getting on, and we kind of, we are now all talking, saying, "Hey, where are you putting yours at? Okay, well, we'll cover this part, you cover that part." So there's some shared responsibility there. And then there were a couple cases, just success stories from around. One of our cases that we did late last, I think it was last fall, beginning of the school year, we had a threat to a particular student at the high school. Wasn't a threat for the high school. We were able to ask for the assistance of the sheriff's department because they had Flock cameras. Our undercover, our narcotics officer was able to work with their Pontiac's undercover unit. They were able to throw the plate of the kid, of the suspect's vehicle into the Flock system. They were able to determine where he was within the last hour. They set up in that area, and within 15 minutes, they had him on a, driving in that same area. They were in a medical traffic stop. He was arrested for a drug charge, which made our job a lot easier that night because he was in custody. Our victim, potential victim, was safe, and then we were able to get our charges in the meantime. But this one comes out of the Michigan State Police in Dearborn, where a young lady was murdered in Tennessee. Dearborn was able to, Tennessee put the information into the Flock camera system. They hit in Dearborn, and Dearborn was able to get, make contact with the vehicle, and I believe it was after a pursuit where they ended up finding the body of the woman in the back of the vehicle. There's been some other cases on here, again, some of this I put on there, where they're catching homicide suspects. I just happened to be on my way home last week when Rochester Hills put out one, and myself in a stolen car crossed an intersection at the same exact time, and I was able to alert Troy PD to where this car was now at, on live, you know, live time. So there's a lot of success stories out there with using the Flock camera systems. Lieutenant Pazuti also put together a draft policy for our agency, and ours, it's very strict. We don't have, not every person in the agency has access. It's a limited access to our investigators, our dispatch center, most likely our on-duty supervisors, and then the investigative command staff as well. So not every patrol officer will be able to just go into Flock camera system and search. They have to have a reason. They have to get approval through our command staff in order to be able to move on and continue that search. There's nothing that we feel is that exigent where an officer doesn't have time to get the permission through that, through our investigative process and through our thing. So anything to add on the policy of that?
Just not so much with that, who has access, but the biggest concern is always going to be the audit trail. What I have temporarily in the, and again, the draft policy, is at least a minimal of twice a year. And twice a year, what that means is twice a year, I think, and I can't recall, if I have maybe 12 or 15 plates, we'll randomly check 12 or 15, at least that many plates that were ran to make sure the process was properly followed. In other words, was there a case number? What was an actual investigation? Who the officer was, or who the dispatcher supervisor was? What was the purpose of it? So minimal of twice a year. And again, with that transparency porthole, that'll be shown out so the public can see it as well, where it's not, we're not just randomly picking things. So that was one of the things that Flock does offer because that's also, excuse me, always comes in conversation with communities, that it's not Big Brother watching, but this is the sole purpose. I would say, do you have a copy of it on there?
Yeah, there's, yeah, just monitor operations, that it's, we have to be trained as an agency. And again, they're specific on what they can do and what they put in the system. These are for crimes and then investigative tips. And we've been following these tips back, so a lot of times we'll get a credit card stolen from a vehicle on a larceny. We're able to, you know, if we get a vehicle description, possibly track that vehicle back to an area where we can then begin an investigation with our undercover teams. So, and it's been successful for them. We are requesting nine cameras, which as of right now, in speaking with Jason, we can, we can absorb that in our current budget, the number of openings we've had all year, and then if we want to expand the program. We figured nine, that's, it could be one or two less, won't be more than nine at this point that we know of. And that's, each camera covers about two lanes. So, you know, an intersection like Square Lake and Telegraph example would cover, would have a lot of ground to cover with that. Part of it is, is determining where we can be responsive. If we have one at Telegraph and Square Lake going northbound, well, by the time it gets put out by our dispatch, good chance it's going to be in the city of Pontiac. So we're not even going to respond to that. So they have to be placed convenient and where it makes sense for the organization and the best benefit of our community. So there are, the last thing we have to do, and we do with other agencies, is being part of Flock, we have access to everybody's other cameras as well, but we have to sign a memo of understanding with those agencies indicating that we will follow their policies if we need to use it for any type of information, which is a benefit to us. So we'll know when people are using our cameras or accessing our cameras for that purpose. So we were, we would like to move forward with this program, and we kind of wanted to bring it to your attention to make sure that, as a board, there's no questions. I'm sure there are. And then what we can, you know, again, it's another tool in our toolbox to help fight crime that's happening right here.
First question is about the nine cameras. Are you looking to let us know where they are, or are you not wanting people to know where they are?
No, well, I don't want to publicly say them yet because we're not sure because Auburn Hills, Troy, and them are still purchasing cameras. We wanted to make sure our board was good with it so that we can make the best determination on it. We didn't want to put more time and energy in if the board was not going to be supportive of this.
That's fair. Something we as citizens can do to help also is to lock our cars. And for sure, if you're, if you do leave them unlocked, do not leave the key fobs in the cars.
Please.
That's one thing that we can at least get out there, and I know you do it on every press release, but I, it's very rare you see that the car wasn't unlocked with the key fob in the car. So as residents, let's at least protect ourselves.
Yeah, yes.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question.
The one thing I would add, supervisor, is that if you are looking for these cameras, you can see them. They're not covert, they're not hidden. They are right there. I drove by three of them today, going just from the prosecutor's office back to the township hall here. If you know what you're looking for, you can see them mounted. They're not discreet by any means. So there's no hiding where these locations are, really anyways.
And the initial cost in the first year, I think the quote we got the other day for the nine cameras was $44,000. And that's because MDOT, we go, we have to go through the permitting process with MDOT as well, and they won't allow us to put these cameras on any MDOT pole. So they have, we have to have special poles for the first round of install. If the count, some of the county poles we're allowed to do are private property, and then that cost would come down. So I save $44,000, but that's if we had to do every camera on every pole and on its own individual pole. I do know we've had some residents reach out, and again, this, they're, they can be sponsored by residents as well, and I have had one or two reach out to us and say they'd be interested in helping, you know, in areas. So again, those are preliminary. I don't want to make any promises on that, but for the cost of them and where I think this is going for all the agencies, and I believe Brian got some numbers, I think, what was it, West Bloomfield has?
West Bloomfield has 20, Oakland County has 25, Troy has 23, Auburn Hills has 22.
So, and they all started like us, where, you know, where it was, and they saw the benefit to it, so.
So my one question, when I was reading it, is why is there the 30-day limit? Because, I mean, I understand they don't want you to have the information forever, but say there was a crime that came about and you didn't realize, and by the time it, you know, you get all your investigation done and 30 days expires, and it's like, well, maybe you could have had another piece of evidence that that vehicle was in that area, kind of like when they track cell phone technology, you know, to track where people were. So why would they just let it expire? Because what if it was like, "Oh, we found out, we just really need that"?
That, the way they explained that to us was strictly the transparency, and they recognize the concerns of the public as well. So they listened to the, they did listen, and which is kind of, it's hard sometimes to, and maybe Stephanie, because I know you're smiling, being on the defense side of things, when these first came out, it really got tied in with the facial recognition that agencies were going to, and they're two completely different things. And so I think the way they explained it to us was they just listened to the concerns and came up with an agreement or a way to say, "You know what? We understand, we don't want this to be an apparent of Big Brother always on top of you." You know, these cell phones that we do, they were very explicit. Again, I used the Lansing case because they were very transparent on what, how they did it. We're being tracked every step of the move that we make all day long when we have this.
Well, it was interesting in the police academy a couple weeks ago where they, an officer, I believe it was from a different department, but she did a presentation to the kids where they documented how they were able to track where these people were when one of them turned over their cell phone, and they could just pinpoint, you know?
Yeah, that was a multiple armed robbery out of many jurisdictions, but yes.
That was very interesting.
And that was kind of pre-this. Had this been happening, we, agencies would have known when this car even at least entered their jurisdiction.
If it had been within 30 days when they found out.
But I mean, probably the 30 days is enough, right? Because if they come into the township, we're going to get the alert, and then you're going to...
And it, it's on the agency then, hopefully to build leads within that 30 days to hopefully identify a vehicle. And if not, we're back to square one, and we do it a different way. You know, and hopefully, it doesn't mean we can't put a search in for that vehicle, again, to see where it's been. It just means we don't have the data to have it in our area or in that, you know, to prove that it was there that day. But maybe they're doing a home invasion in the city of Auburn Hills, and we can help establish that case for them. They were in the area, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I did have a question with regard to the public portal. So you're saying that, like, residents can go on and they can see, they can see what license plate numbers were run?
No. What they can do is they can go and see how many times we use, we access the tool itself.
I see.
They can't see the plates. They're not going to see, like, the officer's names. They're going to see that, how many times we used it, and then we can add, like, case notes. We can say the case was solved, a criminal was apprehended, or something of that nature.
So this is an example of Jackson PDs. And they, so within the 30-day retention period, obviously 30 days, the number of owned cameras, they have 10, and the hot list hit in the area in the last 30 days was 109. So they had 109 hits in the, you know, in that time period, and I think this is actually a live one. Yeah, updated today.
That's that hit.
So, and we would, this is part of the cost, and this would, we would absolutely, there's no reason not to put this out there in the transparency.
And you, as a department, you could decide to have the retention less than 30 days? Just, but I guess the question I'm really getting at is, could you do it over 30 days or that's Flock's limit is 30 days?
Flock's limit is 30 days.
Okay. And, I mean, look, candidly for me, even as a criminal defense attorney, you know, okay, crime is up, you see this mother from Tennessee is found here in Michigan, and it all sounds great. But what concerns me is that, you know, today we're not, it doesn't have the facial recognition capability, and today we're not doing, you know, predictive policing, and today we're not keeping it over 30 days. But once the infrastructure is there, policies can change, and in theory, all of that could, you know, be out the window. And then the only other thing that's sort of, I guess, I don't know if troubling is maybe, you know, too emphasizing it too much, but that each agency can have their own policy. So again, what I'm hearing from our team sounds great, but then just, you know, like I said, on the face of it, it seems really good, but there is just, and maybe this is the, you know, criminal defense attorney in me, but a part of me just thinks, you know, it can be sort of a slippery slope, although I can certainly see the advantages of it, so.
There's been no talk of expanding it, and I don't see us ever, I mean, I don't want to say never, right? Because it's a strong word. But for like facial rec, I just...
Well, I was even thinking, you know, Chief Gallagher, I think, you know, you're the best we could have, but, you know, candidly, and I wish you a long career, but what's going to happen in 30, 40, you know, 50 years? None of us are going to be here, but these cameras will still be there.
Well, the thing is, is we can end the program at any time, right? So the cameras are more or less, we pay $3,000 per year for cameras. So if something were to come up where it was, where we felt as an agency or an organization, as a community, and as a board, that they were, there was unethical standards or something changed to that, we have the right to say, thank you for this time in service without any future, you know, cost to us. They don't, yeah, they take their equipment back, but at that point, we can say, yeah, we're not, we're not keen on where this is going.
When you say no talk of expansion, do you mean both at our local level and at the Flock level? No talks of expansion?
No, there's been, that we know of anything expanding until longer than 30 days. They're the ones who set that rule. I don't know when that took place, I don't want to speak on that behalf and why that came. My understanding it was because of all their conversations with, again, they listened to the ACLU and different groups who had concerns and really tailored the program to them. Not to them, kind of in conjunction with them is how it was more explained to us with that 30-day rule. And the snapshot of the car, technology, we're on camera all day long. So I, I mean, it really, it's just what's accessible. I will tell you that the policy we drafted up was a lot of copy in because so many other agencies do it. And, you know, some of the area surrounding jurisdictions who we thought would really be, struggle with getting them, actually approved them because there isn't just a every user, every officer, every person type mentality behind it. You have, and the audit trail, you have to have a reason. Yeah, we can be proactive, but you still just can't search just because I want to search. I can't sit down there and be like, hey, it's Facebook, let's look around and see who's in township today.
I actually did want to ask, so with regard to that audit, and I like the idea of doing it two times a year and choosing the license plates randomly, is that something that if a board member wanted to see, we could see?
Well, we would make the audit available to you guys, absolutely. The question would be making sure that the information provided in those audits is not criminal, you know, seizure, is compliant. But for, we will, we'll probably make that as part of our annual, part of our accreditation is, is it Flock's requirement to do an audit, Brian?
Yes.
Flock has a requirement for audit and for 30-day retention. That's their rules.
Yeah, the audit though, it's, it can be solely, they require basically one time a year, Flock does, I decide at least by, at least twice a year. It's, I think, just more, you know, more mind your Ps and Qs of your people, make sure everyone's not misusing it.
And just to be clear, a lot of our policy does reflect Flock's policy that's already there. So when we talk about things like you have to have a reason and a case number to access the search, if I were to just get into the system without a case number, my name and a reason for the search, Flock won't even allow it. So it's much like the criminal justice system that we're using through the law enforcement network, where you have to have those reasons. I can't just run someone's criminal history without a report number and a approved reason why, not just a reason, an approved reason why.
And so then it sounds like Flock already has a relatively high standard, and then if we want to make it stricter, like adding another audit, then we can do that.
Absolutely. And if we find areas where we need to be stricter, we'll, we'll change that policy in a heartbeat. Like, we do that constantly with pursuits, and, you know, we look at every single individual case on its, on its face, on the, you know, the process and the outcome. And just because the outcome is great, doesn't mean the process getting there was great.
I absolutely could not agree more. And that was why I was saying with regard to different agencies having different policies, because then if we have a different police agency, not one of our, you know, men and women of the fine Bloomfield Township Police Department, but accessing our information improperly, can that happen?
They have to have the same, they have to provide the same exact information we have to provide in order to do it.
According to our policy.
According to our policy. And it's a requirement of Flock even to get it, that you have a case number and a reason and your officer's name. So that way, if we audited it and we see, you know, Detroit pulled up something, if we called down and said, why did you, you know, we have the reason, but is this legit? They're going to be able to say yes or no, right? And then obviously, we would deal with it. But I, as of what they talked about on the thing, there's been no misuse, it's kind of hard to misuse it.
Well, that's actually what I was just thinking, because if you have to put in what, and your name and the license plate, then...
And they have, and it's no names, so it's just a license plate. Like, I can't get your name.
The officer name.
Oh, yeah, yes. And they have to sign an agreement with us that they're, that they have to sign the general MOU through Flock that they're going to apply or go by, by our, our policy and the rules and laws of the state of Michigan. If it's misused, there could be criminal, like, just like lean or anything else, there's criminal potential there for an officer. So there's a lot to lose if we find somebody that's, you know, purposely trying to misuse the system.
And they could also lose that agreement with us, which would make that department that you're speaking of no longer have access to our cameras. Just like if we were to misuse it, Auburn Hills could say, nope, Bloomfield Township has no access to our cameras.
So you control who accesses our camera.
Correct. They have to get approval through our department, through that MOA, saying they're going to follow our policy and rules, just like we have to get Auburn Hills' policy, eventually Birmingham's. We have to sign their MOA saying, we will abide by your rules when we are searching your camera. So we would have the ability, if there were that department out there that were maybe misusing them, or it came to our attention, to address that and remove them from our system.
And to follow up on your transparency question of audit, not just the board, but would the public have full access to this? I know you mentioned you would put in your annual report, but could we either put on your transparency page or just on the police page?
Outside of the personal information, I see no reason why. We already get rid of it for, you know, I think we go above and beyond with the annual report. We also include our pursuit review each year and our use of force. This would be no different. It would have, it would have this information already out there that's live every day, but it would have a little bit more information of Lieutenant Pizzuti's audits or whoever he assigns to audit those, that audit. Of course, we would have to remove license plate numbers, you know, we would make them unique, ABC 0123, ABC 0124, whatever it may be, to show that, yes, they were audited, these were the reasons, and this was the outcome. And again, that outcome may be arrest, it may be, you know, insufficient leads, whatever it may be. But I don't see why we can't publicize those audits. Of course, we would have to get rid of the actual license plate numbers.
Right. Do you have any more stuff?
I get the, all of my final comment. Thank you for explaining me, Treasure Keefe, is, and again, this is just my skepticism and frankly, of the cloud also. So the data is stored, they say that they use Amazon Web Services, and, you know, I don't know what a hacker would want to do with that information, but then it just always, you know, there's always that concern. I was just reading an article about the CIA had some database hacked, so if they can get hacked, I think, you know, anybody can be hacked. But I'll just let the remaining, you know, the rest of the board, what they have to do.
Yeah, I just want to address that.
Sure.
Our license plates are visible in plain view every day. So they can't get any personal information, there's no information they're going to gather from a data breach from them, other than the car was in an area of Square Lake and Telegraph at, you know, a certain time, right? They can't pull the name...
It's not linking a name to...
Name to a person. And that person actually driving the car to the plate, so that we have to have reasonable suspicion for, or probable cause.
Are you good?
Yeah.
You can always take it back.
No, thank you.
So Chief, I think it's great technology, and I guess I'm concerned, the trustee, and I'm wondering to prevent, I'm trying to think of the word, I guess function creep, let's call it. So as time goes on, the function does include facial recognition. And in terms of our policy, I would imagine, I'm looking at, it's more things of what we can and can't do, but not what the technology may do in the future. So is there anything that we can adopt by adopting, so for example, not to include facial recognition, not to include something over 30 days unless the board approves it? Because so far, it sounds like we're adopting their policies and we're adding on, but if their technology creeps on, so that at least it's brought to us and we have the ability to approve or not approve that.
I would have no problem with that. Again, I don't, because I don't want to speak on behalf of Flock and what they're, what they're going to do down the road. But I would have zero problems if we brought back, and again, we're going to, we'll make it a point when we present on their annual reports, to bring this information in and share it with our community, especially if we have success stories, right? Our community needs to know what we're doing as an agency and as a board to protect our residents. So maybe we have a year where it doesn't help us, but maybe we have a year it helps us a lot. So I find it hard to believe it's not going to help us. But in that case, I would absolutely have no problem. We can, we can actually put that in our policy, language in our policy.
Speak it into the motion.
Okay.
Well, this policy is a police department policy, it's not a board policy.
That's what I'm saying, it's not exactly.
We need a board policy for those issues.
But if you spoke into the motion that we, that we support it with this change...
It'll just, I'll keep it as part of the file.
Yeah.
You know, so that way, anybody that's here, if they pull the Flock file, it'll say the motion in there and what we need to do if it changes. But I have zero issues with, and I think it's only fair to bring it back to the board and the community if the, if there's changes of that nature to this. If there's going to be enhanced technology that could be intrusive to somebody's privacy or their rights, I think we have absolutely the right, the obligation to bring it back to this board.
And when do you see enacting this?
We will move forward, you know, we'll make contact with them tomorrow if the board says so. But we're looking at probably four to six months out with the backlog that they are installing and the MDOT processing and the permitting fees and, you know...
And then lastly, this is for one year at a time?
One year at a time. So we can at any time say, sorry.
Okay.
Is it, would you be interested in putting in, just so they don't have, do you want them to come back every year, or do you want them to come back, say, like we do at the other, with every few years unless there's a change?
Well, the reality is it's going to be in the budget, I guess.
Yeah.
It will be a budget request from moving forward.
I like specifically saying it though, too. I mean, it's in the budget, so a lot of other things that don't necessarily get spoken and discussed every time.
Yeah, but there's a lot of technology that's in the budget. And if we, I mean, I guess, if we have an issue with it...
This will be spelled out specifically, Flock cameras, because it's an annual cost. Right? It's a revolving cost every year. I think it's, it would be noticed.
Well, it will be in your annual report, so that's another opportunity to talk about it. But I understand trustee Faqee's concern about the cameras, but on the other side of it is, you drive down the road and, I mean, just as an average person, there's cameras at like every major intersection watching us. You go into stores, you're being watched. Heck, our garbage trucks have more cameras now. You know, you're being watched everywhere, and so in that respect, it doesn't freak me out because cameras are part of our lives.
Well, I say that because tow truck drivers, repo cars, repo, they all have these Flock cameras in their vehicles. They can't access the information, but law enforcement can. So cameras in the stores are much more intrusive than what the Flock is doing. If you drove anywhere outside of Bloomfield Township today, in any one of the communities, leaving or coming, you were on Flock camera.
Chief, well, one thing I would add, and I don't know if it's going to be more disturbing or more settling to answer your questions, but listening, listening to you speak, one thing that I would add is, these, not, maybe not necessarily Flock, but this technology is already in our township. From what I do as a crime prevention specialist and community meetings, we already have LPRs that have this capability within our township, whether they're on private businesses, so they're doing it on their own, or at private residential homes. They are in our township, this technology is already here. It's just not, it's not funded by the township, and it's not police department funded. So maybe that doesn't help settle the question. But that technology is in our township already.
Couple questions I have.
Do you have any more? Okay.
A couple. One, like a technology type question. Sometimes driving down the road, I see people who have a, like sunglasses, you know, a shade over their plate. Occasionally, you'll see folks that shade, have a, you know, a plastic cover over their plate that you really can't see it. Flock will see through that? You know, what happens?
I think that's, well, two things on it. It could, depending on the angle. The second would be, if we know that, that's another identifier for the back of the vehicle we could put in there. You know, it's just, hey, you know, this person said it had a tinted license plate, we can put that as, again, you're just, that would be more the proactive, right? The proactive approach to it. I don't know, Brian, did they talk to that? I don't remember them talking to that tinted.
No, no tinted plates, but just any characteristics, like rust spots, for example, missing wheel covers or a different color, different kind of a wheel, luggage racks, they're kind of obvious. But some, I don't think they specifically spoke to the tint, I know what you speak of, the tinted plate over the plates.
Are those, by the way, I have no idea. People allowed to have those? I mean, you see them.
Not really.
Well, you see them all over the place.
It's a plate obstruction.
Interesting.
One other thing is these cameras only detect one direction, right? So if you have a two-lane road and you have a camera going, it's only going to detect the lane that's going to lead to the license plate. So now if they're right next to each other, you may get a portion of that other car in the photo, but they're not meant to capture oncoming traffic, just traffic going away.
And I wanted to just make sure I understand too, from, you know, I want to describe sort of two situations. What I'm hearing you say is that accessing, the police department accessing the Flock data is based upon a specific need articulated by a specific officer to access the information that's in there. Like, I want to see XY license plate for this XY reason, and it's, you know, Chief Gallagher. It's not, and that's what we're doing. It's not, for instance, scanning every plate that drives by the light, scanning it against the database of every single, you know, arrest warrant or crime, or, it's not automatically doing that and then feeding that data to...
No, this information has to be entered into the system in order for it to hit back as a hit, well, I say a hit, a wanted vehicle of some sort. So it has to be actually entered into the database.
Yes.
There are cameras out there.
But you're not accessing it without a specific need by a specific person.
And it won't tell us the name of the person.
If that car was stole, if there was a vehicle stolen from my residence tonight, and I did not report it stolen, it would not be in the Flock system yet that it was stolen. So if it went by that night, a couple cameras, it wouldn't trigger an agency to say it's stolen, because it does not, it doesn't know that, and it doesn't go in, let's say I reported it with a city that doesn't have Flock and they didn't put that in there, it does not communicate with the secretary of state. So just because a vehicle is listed as stolen in the secretary of state, like when we traditionally run a license plate, that's not necessarily always in Flock. So it's not every, it has to be entered. We had a car stolen from Bloomfield Township, we're now searching for that car, we would put that license plate in with the report number, reason being stolen vehicle, now Now it's added to that hot list that would alert other communities. But it's not automatic once it gets reported stolen to a police department or even entered into the secretary of state as stolen. It has to also be entered into flock as a vehicle a department is looking for on that hot list.
And if it goes through a intersection with this camera, then you automatically get a notice?
The dispatch center, we get a notice.
Dispatch.
Or if Brian was in his office and he's one of our, Brian will be one of our, you know, administrators on it, then he would get an alert too if he was at his computer. But the, almost all of it will most likely come through the dispatch center and says, hey, you have a, you know, stolen car is the easiest one. You have a stolen car, that officer then has to visually see that plate, make sure that that plate matches the plate that's listed as stolen, and that it's a Michigan plate. Because there are some states that have similar numerical digits as us. And then they also have to have dispatcher run that through the NCIC, our, our computer system, to verify it's stolen before they can act on it. Now, some of that, I was explaining to treasurer keeps earlier, some of that's simultaneous, right? If the dispatcher receives a hit, a hot stolen car, they're gonna broadcast it out. We got a flock camera alert, you know, ABC 123, gray Toyota Camry. Last, it, it tripped at, you know, Telegraph and Square Lake. It's the easiest intersection. You know, it was last seen southbound, but we don't know if it went eastbound, westbound, because again, we may only have a southbound covered. So if it turned eastbound, we may never catch it. If it continued southbound, and you got a guy leaving the station, they might. But once they see that plate, they, the dispatcher then will say, I ran the plate, it is a confirmed stolen vehicle out of, you know, wherever. And then the officers can act on that. If it's a wanted person attached to a plate, then they're gonna have to establish that that person driving the car resembles, and this is what we do on a daily basis already, somebody that's a wanted person. And that's a little bit more on the officer and their investigative techniques, but that's something we do every single day without this technology. So.
Those alerts can also, I mean, we use stolen vehicles because it's such a common example. But if we look back to the tragedy that just happened, Amber Alerts is, is another perfect example. When they get that Amber Alert, and they've got a vehicle and a license plate, well, they can enter that in the flock. You know, if they're hundreds of miles away, other departments are gonna get that alert. And at least we now know, you know, where that missing could be, or where that suspect in that missing could be.
Every community participating in flock then, once that-
They can add that car, vehicle to the hot list for something like-
You get ding ding as it drove through each community and-
The dispatch centers would. And now, I'll tell you, just to give you an example, I'll do any, is Farmington Hills, or was that Southfield border? I think it was Farmington Hills had a homicide shooting, I would say within the last month-ish, at a, a hotel in, I think Northwestern and close to 12 Mile. The suspect left the scene, and Warren was able to make that arrest based on a flock camera hit several minutes, you know, within, within the hour, I believe it was, of that homicide suspect. And ended up, actually ended up in a shooting in Detroit, so.
So thinking about the downside of if we didn't do this, considering just two off the top of my head that happened recently in our area, then the last year, and they leave our area. If we didn't, if we don't have flock, and something happens at Steve's Deli, like we had, or Temple Bethel, and they leave our area. If we don't have flock, it doesn't get entered into flock, so people don't know to look for it. But if we do have flock, we would enter it, and we would've known they went to Southfield, they went here, they went here.
Yep. We would've absolutely worked with our partners who had flock, hopefully, during this, especially Steve's Deli being a shooting.
Right.
That-
We would've known where he was, on a fast-
Southfield, yep, hundred percent. Southfield just happened to, we called Southfield and said, hey, you know, this guy, you know, could be coming down here. And they set up close to his residence and saw his vehicle. That, or if not, these, our investigators would've absolutely gotten, you know, somebody, then, we wouldn't have been able to enter the vehicle. So no, actually, we would not have been able to, because we couldn't have had anybody else enter it for us, because we weren't members of it. Southfield couldn't enter it on our behalf.
So seeing that there were two times that this would've been beneficial, that we could've entered for Steve's Deli, or we could've for Temple Bethel. By not being a part of it, it, there is a risk in, in not being a part of it as well, in addition to the risks of being a part of it.
I think the rewards in us being transparent and forthcoming, as the technology changes, and if it becomes more intrusive, then we bring, as treasurer keeps said, we bring it back to the board.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, if Mark has any experience with this. Dirk did look over the MOU agreements, and I don't know if Mark was part of that at that time, for, probably for some of the other municipalities. And nobody has, I mean, there hasn't been any problems that we know of with them, so.
Yeah, I, I reviewed part of the initial package when this first came up, and I made some recommendations for the policy. And then Dirk has reviewed this agreement, and it's consistent with what was presented, so.
Well, and the fact that our, all around us, all our communities around us and our partners have it already and are using it, speaks to the fact that, you know, it's a known technology. It's in use with other departments you know of. It's kind of like a huge-
And increased, right? They started low, and now they're at twenty.
I mean, and it's been around for a while. It almost seems like, you know, we, maybe we should've talked about this even sooner. So no, I think it's a good, a good way to go.
Yeah, disagree.
Anybody have any more questions, comments?
Make a motion. I'm comfortable enough that this technology as presented is narrow enough in scope, with enough protections, with transparency, that I'm comfortable with it. In addition to that, adding that if there, as we discussed, if there's enhanced technology that becomes more intrusive, that it will be presented back to the board for, you know, our knowledge and consideration. So with that said, I would make the motion to approve as presented with the additional language.
Support. Trustee Burnett with the motion, trustee Murray with support. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And we will also just write that right into our policy.
Is that for the full nine?
Was your motion for the full nine cameras?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I just wanna, we will also, that's not something normally we'd put in our policy, that line, but we can for any future, you know, personnel that's here, that they know that if this comes back up and, and, you know, changing the technology, we're, we'll absolutely document that.
It also helps with any change personnel here in your, in your case as well.
Yep.
To protect against you having to, to deal with any of that.
Yep.
And maybe, I mean, just to be really exact, I mean, I think we're talking anything but specifically facial recognition, I think is probably the most significant.
I'm in with that. I mean, I, I support that.
Yeah, even if it was said enhanced, including facial recognition.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. So that does pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next we have reviewing the current special assessment district projects. We have both director Darren Crofts, and we also have, is Jen gonna be a part of coming up here, Jen? Jen Worthman will be coming up with us. And we also have Mark Messler from the road commission of Oakland County.
Forty-six months, I gotta ride my e-bike to work.
And this will be covering not just road, but road, water, sewer.
No, I'm good, thanks. This is becoming a regular occurrence for us these days. I was just telling the chief, now that you guys have approved that, I'm gonna have to start riding my e-bike to work. So we have two presentations tonight. The first one is gonna be with, about the current projects that we currently have going, some that are in the hopper. And then, of course, we're gonna address some of the ones that have been approved over the last several years. So we'll start with South Bloomfield Highlands, the water SAD project. For those of you guys that aren't aware, South Bloomfield Highlands has a, they own and operate two community wells in the subdivision, both of which are not working at, at full capacity. So the majority of the water infrastructure in South Bloomfield Highlands is in excess of 100 years old. The output is, is substandard for fire protection and, and nearing the end of its useful life. And quite frankly, the drinking water is reaching levels that are, are becoming unsafe for consumption. If the S, if the subdivision owned wells were to fail completely, the township does have a plan in place to step in and supply water to the subdivision. You know, but of course, it, you know, it, it's gonna be time consuming for, for DPW and those guys to step in. They're gonna have to run pipes, they're gonna have to run lines, just to get very low water pressure into that subdivision. So there's gonna be no, you know, watering your lawns, no watering your plants, and firefighting's gonna be very difficult. So the EOI's have been signed by a majority of the residents. The number, excuse me, the number we had is 61%. Of those 61% that signed, they're well aware that the minimum cost is gonna be about 40,000 per unit benefit in that subdivision. So we have 221 units of benefit. Four parcels are owned by the subdivision. So there's 209 homes and 12 vacant lots. So again, Eagle's determined that the subdivision owned, maintained fire hydrants are no longer adequate. They can no longer produce 1,000 gallons per minute to fight house fires in that subdivision. So I think it's important to note that if the subdivision owned wells were to fail, Bloomfield Township Fire Department, again, like the DPW, they do have a plan in place to assist in fighting fire or to, to fight fires. But what they're gonna have to do is they're gonna have to bring in, you know, depending on where it's at in the subdivision, they could have to bring in an extensive amount of hoses and, and pumps to, to just get water just to the property to, to try and assist in, in putting out the fire. So again, you know, one of their concerns is this is a time consuming process, and, and it really hampers their ability to fight fires. So I, I wanna point out that on April 26th, we had Corey Almas, our engineering director, sign an agreement with HRC to proceed forward with development of the plan and development of the cost estimate for a brand new water system in South Bloomfield Highlands. HRC, on their agreement, indicated that it was gonna be somewhere between 90 and 120 days to complete this design process. So what they're doing now in that 90 to 120 days is they're going in there, they're surveying the, the subdivision, and they're coming up with an accurate, a more accurate estimate for what the cost of the project's gonna be. That $40,000 number came from a, like a 30,000 foot estimate as to what it might potentially cost. You know, which was, which was made known to the, the residents at a, a meeting that we had, when we had, I mean, a couple months ago. We met with the homeowners association and had, had a, I don't know, hour and a half, hour and 45 minute discussion with them that went, went very, very well. And I think most of them had the understanding that that 40,000 was probably on the low end of, of what the estimate's actually gonna come back in at, so. So the next steps is, once the estimate is complete, Jennifer and I will develop the petition and get that out for circulation.
Can we, can we stop and talk about that for a moment?
Yeah, 'cause I'm writing notes about what I wanna explain later. Do you wanna start, or do you want me to?
You can go ahead if you want.
So just to, to remind everyone, so those fixes are temporary, too. Like, this has been going on for decades.
And minimal.
And very minimal. Yeah, there's still no guarantee. It will, it will provide low pressure drinking water. There's a hope it will fight fires. But, and again, those fire hydrants are not township owned. This water system is not township owned. They go directly to the state. They have their own, Noah and Paul and Corey, they have their own person who is licensed, maintains their own per, their own private water system. So we are no connected to them, just like we are not connected to West Bloomfield or Birmingham, just 'cause they are near us. So they go directly to Eagle, but the due diligence of previous administrations, this one as well as others, is what happens if they wait too long and it fails? So this is just temporary to keep drinking water and such available while they then would be forced onto the system.
And they-
They wouldn't have a choice.
Right. Because so, and it would be more expensive, because it would be at an emergency level. So just to make sure that everybody on the board knows that we are not at all affiliated with this personal system. We're just trying to see that if they were to let it go too far, we wanted to know that at least people had clean drinking.
So literally, if they have a water break in, in that subdivision, they have their own guy that runs out there and turns off the stop boxes and does all that kinda stuff. I mean, it literally is their own system.
And they, they have, if you drive through the neighborhood, you would see their hydrants have all been marked yellow. They're all painted yellow, so that our fire department knows that they're, they're fire hydrants, they're not at capacity. They shouldn't really be used at this point.
They can't be used.
And we also had many residents express at the meeting that they're not even using their water. I mean, they bathe in it, that's about it. You know, there's a big percentage of that neighborhood that already is at the point where they're not drinking it. They don't want anything really to do with it.
And their fire, the, the pressures right now are not safe for fire safety. So there have been losses of homes that if they were on a proper, we hope that they could've been saved if they were on our system.
Yeah, the problem is, is that they have to run the wi- the wires, the hoses and the pumps and all that. And depending on where the home is in that subdivision, they may have to run it for a half a football field to a fo- you know, or more, just to get to that house. And by that time, it's, you know-
And depending on what area it is, there's some issues of stopping check, 'cause again, you pointed out, you're talking about running hoses across streets.
Right.
Which means those streets get shut down. So this is a very temporary fix to just help. But then it would be even more expensive, because it'd be an emergency, so.
I think if you ask Noah, I think Noah will tell you that there's nothing that the township can do to fix the problem, other than-
Bring them into the system. Yeah. Do you wanna highlight more?
Yeah, I just, I just to kind of highlight what supervisor Walsh said and you've presented. It isn't our system. It's, it's an expensive, and it's not a fix. It's an expensive redo of a water system that has operated for years and is failing. The residents know it, and that's the good news.
Yep.
It is a material expense for them. I mean, this $40,000 gets to be well more of a percentage of their homes than many of the SADs and roads that we've been dealing with, with other communities. So it's a very sensitive issue for people. But again, you know, you can deal with a, not, not well, but you can, pardon the pun, but you can deal with a failing road, because you still have a road bed. You can't deal with a failing water system, or a failed water system. And it's, it could be failing, but once it's failed, it failed. And it's an immediate situation. You know, we, again, as, as it's been mentioned, there are plans. I think they're probably minimal plans, and it's a plan. I don't know that it's really been tested, tested. So it's a plan. And I think the best thing that we're doing with the subdivision is being extremely proactive, already engaging HRC. Because quite frankly, you know, I'm not gonna, but if something happened last week, I guess the plan or the plans through HRC could try to be moved faster. But the reality is, they have to plan the system. So that is what they're doing. We're waiting for that to come back. And I think once that comes back, we'll be in a much better position to then make, have the number, make the petitions. And then it's on the neighborhood again, and it's, the onus is on them with our support to be able to get those signed as soon as possible, so that then construction and/or the process can begin. But, you know, once we have that number and it goes to the petition phase, it's up to the residents to do it.
You know, I think when we had our homeowners association meeting, you and I were talking about, you know, kinda what we're gonna run into that night. Like, is it gonna be contentious? Is it, you know, and, you know, I know supervisor Walsh and treasurer keeps were there. And I would tell you that it was a very, very positive discussion. Lots of questions, of course, but, you know, that would, that's just standard. But I think everybody there was of the opinion that, you know, this is something that we, we have to get moving, and, and we have to get this done, so.
And I think it's realistic for the board to look forward to seeing this pretty quickly. I mean, we should have our estimate back here very shortly. I preemptively pretty much have everything ready to go. We just need to fill in the blanks once we get our data from HRC and just the feedback from the subdivision. I don't anticipate the petition process is gonna take long. So I would anticipate seeing this, you know, back in front of you within, you know, a few months, once we get it back, so.
And some might wonder why it's, why it would take so long. It's 'cause we're truly developing a brand new system. Their system will be completely abandoned. There will be absolutely no connection between our system and theirs, because there's a, a failing system that is not monitored properly right now. So there won't be people just paying to tap into ours. It is actually a fully, it's the largest one we've done in many years, 200 home, 221 properties. So it's, it's planning out the entire area for that, and then connecting it to our system, and then they would abandon theirs. So it's not, it's not as easy as just where can we help them tap into our system from their current one.
And while Noah's not here, he has worked pretty hard to try and brainstorm and figure out ways to help the residents, and possibly some cost savings by bringing in a contractor to kind of agree to do the whole neighborhood and get some residents some cost savings as well. So he's put a lot of time into this, so.
It sounds like a complicated process, 'cause while we, if we start putting in the new water system, we can't obliterate, you know, run into their pipes or whatever. But it seems like, although it's gonna be expensive for the residents, certainly the right idea. But also, if they have their own system and their own people that do their own emergencies, they're, it's not like they're getting free well water. There, there's a cost that they have right now for their substandard system, so.
Yeah, and then they're gonna have to pay for their, their, their stop boxes, and they're gonna have to pay for the pipe from the, from the road to the house, wherever that may enter. So, you know, some may just be right in the front, some may be around the back, you know. So if it's around the back, it's gonna be more, of course, than, than just going right into the front of the house. So there's still a lot of variables that are, that are, you know, from the homeowners' end outside of the, the cost of the SAD that they're gonna have to take into consideration, too. You know, some of them are gonna be pretty expensive, above and beyond the SAD per unit benefit, so.
And that's where Jen was mentioning, some of the cost savings, when you have whoever ends up winning that bid of creating this system. If we could also work in with, well, the private side is, you know, each, like you mentioned, from that box to tap in, and all of the piping they need to go up there. If they can do a program where if you go through this person, here's the discount, they could also still go on their own to somebody else. But he is trying to help also, help minimize the personal costs that will also be in addition to the SAD.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Any other questions on South Bloomfield Highlands, before we move on?
You go.
Okay. So these next couple slides, I'm not gonna necessarily go item by item on, or line by line. I will just highlight a couple of them, or some of them. So the red ones are, all right, so starting with Kirkway, the green one on top. Kirkway, obviously, we all know that that one's been done, it's complete. Construction's due to start in sometime this month. And so that one's kind of on its own. Franklin, Franklin Ravines, Tully, and Maywood, we're just kind of waiting on, waiting on the intent to proceed from the subdivision. Vernon Estates, again, we're, we're, that one was through the EOI phase. We've got, we've got it up to RCOC, and we're waiting for them to give us the cost estimates on that one. The big ones, Bloomfield Village, so depending on who you talk to, depends on the color of the section. But we'll stick with what we know, which is red, blue, yellow, orange, and green. So as far as red goes, the petitions were, were released on 11/28/22. We don't have those back yet. Blue phase, which is- Blue Phase, which is the second phase, we released the petitions on 3/1 of 23, and we have those back already. We'll get more specific into the blue phase in my next presentation, but, and then moving down with orange, green, yellow, orange and green, we have kind of estimated construction start dates of 2025, 26 and 27, and then Brookside...
Some new information I didn't even get a chance to tell you, and you is, today after talking with Gary at RCOC, we are gonna be meeting with the village, us and the road commission to start working on the plans for those next sections, now that we're ready to move forward.
Good.
So that'll be, that'll be moving next.
And the intention, while we put the 25, 26, 27, the initial intention was to hopefully get maybe kind of like two going in a year or so. As of right now, as long as things proceed right with blue, they'll get started in 2024, and hopefully we'll have orange slash gold following pretty closely behind that one.
And if one does not pass, for example, let's say that red does not return theirs, they will go to the bottom, so that the village has decided they're going in order. If they get blue going and they get yellow going and the road envy sets in and they're like, oh, we should have done it, they will have to wait till the very end. So they will be many years out from right now. So if they pass right now, they'll be in the first phase. If it doesn't pass and they want to come back, they will be probably four years out, three years out before the next petition for them.
And we work really closely with Kathy, we've been, you know, we have tons of communication going, you know, we know where we're at at every step of the way. So, you know, at this point, we're fairly confident that red will end up going to the bottom.
Yeah.
And we're gonna get going on the next phase.
Yeah.
And then the last one is currently the South Bloomfield Highlands water SAD that we had just talked about.
Well, we also have Brookside Village and Judson-Bradway Chelmsley, which are with RCOC. So we have three currently waiting for estimates from RCOC, and we have Westchester Village number four, which is Breckenridge and Bradway, the little horseshoe shape, and we have developed their petition already, just waiting for that to be picked up and circulated.
Supposed to be picked up today.
Of course, there are more that have asked for more meetings, so there might be a longer list next time you see this.
And then this is one past SADs that have been, that have been approved and are in various states of repayment. One of the interesting, I think, things is to look at is the interest rates on them, you know, where they were at one time, and then all the way down to like Pine Wood Court and Steel Meadow at, you know, 2.522 percent. I mean, I think that's a, that's a pretty good interest rate considering we've added 1% on top of that too, so, and, you know, I'm not sure, we don't, we don't know what Kirkway is yet, do we?
No.
No, okay. So then the original mount on there, so we have the parcel count, the original mounts, the number of years that the SAD was levied for, the starting year, the years remaining. On this, this, we just did the full unit of benefit, we didn't do any unit of benefit that was a half, so whatever the full unit of benefit was, that's what we put in there, and then the current balance of what's still outstanding. Yep. And then the next slide is the...
Can I ask a question about that, just in case we get questions from anybody who's looking at this? So if it doesn't add up that full units of benefits and number is, because you didn't also include the...
The halves and things like that, yeah.
So if somebody sees that the numbers don't match up, it's, there's nothing nefarious, it's just, we went for simplicity. Just wanted to hit that off at the pass.
So then there's a, there's a map of the Bloomfield Village paving project, the different phases. So again, currently being done in five phases, red, blue, yellow, orange and green. The red phase consists of 16,117 feet of road frontage or 3.05 miles of roadway. The initial cost estimate was $10,810,685.16. 222 parcels with a full unit of benefit equating to an assessment amount of $48,696.78 per unit. There are three parcels in there with zero unit of benefit and zero assessed. Petitions were released in November of '22, and they have yet to be turned in. Phase two, the blue phase, consists of 12,105 feet of road frontage or 2.29 miles of roadway. The initial estimate of $8,073,397.38. 191 parcels with a full unit of benefit equating to an assessment of $42,000, excuse me, $269.09. Two parcels with zero unit of benefit and zero assessed. Petitions were released in March of this year and have been returned already and verified. The yellow phase is 12,448 feet of road frontage or 2.36 miles of roadway. Orange is 11,057 feet of road frontage or 2.09 miles, and green is 14,810 feet of road frontage or 2.80 miles. Any questions? Comments, concerns, anything?
Do you have any questions? No, a lot to take in, I don't want to...
I think that's really the first time that we've had a full review of everything that's outstanding. I think it's a, it's a great review. I think it gives us a perspective, the community a perspective of what we're doing, and as we can see from the first presentation, we have a lot going on, and I think we have a lot more that's going to be going on. So it's good that we have a policy, or a policy that we've now revised, that we're actively using it, and that we have our departments well-engaged, and especially the assessing department, leading it and providing us this overview. So thank you very much, very good job.
Jennifer will be taking this process over. She already is my, she already is, Jen, she's...
Couldn't say that quicker than I...
I'm surprised you waited this long.
I can't tell you how phenomenal she's been. I mean, she has been, she's handled, she has jumped right in with both feet.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, from knowing, well, I'll just say it, knowing nothing about road SADs, other than how to verify a signature, to being extremely knowledgeable about handling roads. She handles all the calls, I mean, she's, the SAD process is in good hands, I'll just be honest with you.
Right. She's meticulous, which is important.
This will be the last time you get to see me up here for a while, anyway.
Wow.
Especially since the next one we have to come to is my birthday.
Aww.
Okay.
So is there any more on that agenda item of the review? Are we ready to go on?
Unless there's any questions or anything.
You guys have any questions? All right, so next, let's go on to considering approval of a resolution to accept a petition to create a special assessment district for a road improvement project for Bloomfield Village and schedule the first public hearing of necessity for Monday, August 14th. And then we have Darren Croats.
Okay, so the blue phase, which is phase number two, is up on the screen, it's surprisingly enough, all highlighted in blue. It consists of parts of Judson-Bradways Bloomfield Village number two, Judson-Bradways Bloomfield Village four, six, eight, and it also includes part of Judson-Bradways Bloomfield Village number nine. So this phase consists of 2.62 miles of public roads. I'm not gonna go through a listing of all the roads, but they're on the slideshow of which roads will be impacted. The project consists of pulverizing the existing road, replacing new bitumis pavement, four inches thick over aggregate base with full depth, cold milling asphalt removal. Total curb and gutter, total curb and gutter removal and replacement, total under-drain installation and sotted shoulders. There'll be some drain improvement will be made to assure, you know, the area drains reasonably well off the pavement. All shoulder and disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod, a minimum of five feet, five foot of approach will be constructed to the existing driveways to provide a smooth transition from the newly paved roads where it's necessary. The next couple of slides are, you know, current pictures, we just went out, or Jen just went out last week, two weeks ago maybe, and took pictures of certain sections of the roads that are in this special assessment. You know, pretty clear, there's a decent amount of, and it's actually funny, because we were, we were talking in the office of whether or not there's curb and gutter and throughout the entire village, and we kind of came to the conclusion that there is actually curb and gutter throughout the entire village, but if you look back at some of those, some of those slides, you wouldn't be able to tell that there was. You could see a six-foot section of, oh yeah, there's a curb, and then the next six feet, nothing, six feet after that, there it is, and we're fairly certain that the entire village has curb and gutter throughout. You wouldn't be able to tell it today, but... So the petitions were confirmed by the Township Assessor. It was supported by 56.02% of the homeowners, representing 54.64% of the road frontage. Again, the estimated cost is $8,073,397.38. There's 193 parcels in the SAD, of which 191 are assessable. The tentative assessment for the unit of benefit is $42,269.09. So what we're looking for tonight is for the board to accept the petition and to approve the resolution to create SAD number 426, and also to schedule the first public hearing of necessity for August 14th of this year. Any questions? Comments?
Just have one question. When I saw the amounts for some of these, it seemed high, from what we've seen from other, you know, more recent developments, but you said they had full curb and gutter, and they will get full curb and gutter, so that has got to be a big...
Correct.
...part of why this one is more expensive.
I think they'll recognize that they have curb and gutter after it's done, versus now.
And I don't know if Mark wants to come up, I think the term red brick area, like this is one of the areas that's so much older and so much just kept getting built on top of the next, that they really don't know what they're gonna come across, so some of it is...
There is, we've done our due diligence as well as we can. There's, it's an old sanitary storm combined system, which is red brick structure, so it was literally the storm structures and sanitary structures are made out of the old red bricks that used to be placed on houses. In order to rehabilitate those, we're gonna have to go in, we're gonna have to line those structures, way more cost-effective than going in and tearing out an entire system, et cetera, et cetera. As they spoke of, the entire village has curb and gutter, it's been overlaid so many times that literally the curb and gutter is not visible by eye. There is some sections where the asphalt has peeled off of the curb and gutter, et cetera, et cetera. So along with our testing department drilling holes and going out there, we do know that the curb and gutter is there. We also suspect that there's some concrete pavement underneath the areas of asphalt, so a pretty extensive project we're getting ready to undertake, so. Also loaded with sidewalk, so at every section, we're gonna have to go back and bring everything to ADA complacency, which is also adding to the cost of the project, et cetera, et cetera.
Do you know approximately when the last overlay was done?
I don't.
Curious.
Probably the, maybe Township Noah might have a pretty good idea, because I'm pretty sure it was Township overlays that...
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, I'm a former road paving chair in my sub and did this years ago, and we've been trying to do it again, and, you know, it's like kind of looking ahead to the fun we have, but I'm curious how long an overlay lasts, because some sections we have...
I don't know if we had that information, we can get that...
Yeah, no, it's just more curiosity, like, how many more years do you, you know, did they get out of that? It sounds like they've done that repeatedly, which is how the curbs got buried.
My guess is it's for quite an extensive time to be able to overlay the curb in the manner that the curb's been totally overlaid. So an average curb in a subdivision is, from the edge of metal to the top of the curb is four inches, and like I said, you cannot visibly see the curb any longer.
Yeah, I've driven through there and I never knew they had curb and gutter, so...
And overlays are supposed to be a Band-Aid, not a replacement of a road, but it, they kept overlaying and overlaying that it caused this, so...
Yeah, all right, thank you.
And then we can find out from Noah for you what that...
Yeah, I just, I was just curious if they knew how long.
And then just a reminder, this is just to set the public hearing, so that's why, you know, I'm sure there'll be a lot of people more engaged at the next one, since that'll be the public hearing. So unless we have any other questions, I'd like...
Make a comment.
Yeah.
Question mark. How deep do you think, or in some of your, in some of your evaluations, does concrete pavement go? Do you have like a...
Generally speaking, we're, so our concrete pavements back in the day in the subdivisions were, ranged anywhere from six inches to eight inches.
I mean, in this scenario, how, in terms of your core, how far down, what was the thickest?
We experienced a range between six and eight and a half inches...
That's it?
Of the, the actual concrete pavement. Keep in mind that there is, I think we determined somewhere, and don't quote me on this, but there was five or six inches of HMA on top. So we actually are gonna have a double operation, because those materials do not get recycled in the same plants, per se. So we're gonna have to come in and we're gonna have to mill off all the asphalt, truck it all to the asphalt plant, then we're gonna have to come in with excavators, and we're gonna have to sit in the road and actually pull all of the concrete out, top load trucks, and it'll go to a different, so it's not a come in with an excavator and take everything out at once, it's gonna be a multi-process. This is going to be a very, very challenging project.
Well, and then you'll have to redo the road bed with crushed concrete.
Then what we have to do is to bring everything back up to grade, so a lot of people don't realize, during the SAD or the rehabilitation process of a subdivision that's fully developed, we have to bring everything back up to match the existing lawns and et cetera, et cetera. Hence the reason that we're gonna bring gravel and 21AA, and we're actually gonna disperse 21AA right behind the operation of pulling the concrete, so that A, we can maintain access and we bring everything back up, and then we'll put the curb and gutter and the edge drain and the four inches of HMA.
Wow. It's a big project.
Big one.
And I guess to the point of, this is double the cost of the most expensive one we've done, which is Kirkway, which is $4 million, so this is $8 million, and it's not getting cheaper, so...
You haven't experienced that.
Yeah. So, and I don't remember, I think the village, I don't know if you know what the first number was, 15, 20 years ago, this must be exponentially higher than that.
I host all of our meetings, and we call them Reborns again, and that's when the fight really starts, because five years, even up to two or three years previous to a project moving forward, it was a lot less, the number was a lot smaller in the assessment than what it is, and that's where a lot of the contention usually comes in the SADs.
When you see this amount of, I mean, we used to be lucky if we got 50.1 or 51, to see them get 56 in an area that is double, there's a lot to be said about the group that did this, you know, with Kathy, the village manager, who's even here today, in case you have questions. We also had, you know, Christine and Brian and Doug, I mean, she had a team that was willing to be there and answer questions and knock on doors, so that is quite an undertaking that you did, so thank you.
With websites, with...
With websites and messaging and meetings, and it's a lot, it's a lot to talk about. This is a huge project, so your team did an amazing job.
I had great volunteers on that whole section.
I was gonna, just wanted to echo the same thing. It's a deep collaboration between the staff here and then the local folks that really make it happen by, by, you know, going door-to-door and communicating, you know, what's really at stake, and it's a huge, congratulations to the folks who've gotten it this far.
Absolutely. Nice job.
This is like, so we've done this, and pretty soon it's gonna be your, with the phone, with the paper really hits the road.
Mark's super excited for this project. So unless there's any other questions, I'd like for a motion to set the hearing.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Bernard.
Support.
Support by clerk Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So we will have that public hearing set for August 14th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have consider approval for the fireworks display for Wabi Country Club, and we have clerk Brooke again.
Okay, this is, we...
Okay, this is, we've seen this now, this is the third time we've seen this. Sadly for the Wabi Country Club, who've been planning this event for some time, they have run across weather-related delays, have-
Wildfires.
-wildfire smokes from, from Quebec delay, and they've now asked for a new date and a rain date. Fire marshal Lojas reviewed the materials, and no other changes have, are apparent to him other than the date. But it requires board action to, to set a date or change a date, and so here we are to request that the board reschedule the Wabi Country Club to July twenty-fourth, starting roughly around ten PM, and a rain date of July twenty-fifth.
And then I believe you're working on too, so that-
Right.
This does have to come to the board, which extends to two weeks, then two weeks, then two weeks-
Right.
-which of course also extends fireworks outside of when you'd normally want it, since the, the idea is to always keep it very close to the date.
So I've drafted a revision to the policy, which would allow two of the three members of the administration to schedule a rain date if all other things are the same.
Well, and their original rain date would have, was a perfect night, but they-
The wildfires came.
But they, but they saw, they thought they saw a great opportunity and asked us to move it up, because they had a different rain date.
Yeah.
Because I live right near there, and we can see them from on the lake, and so it was like, we couldn't figure out why they didn't go off that night, the second night, and it was because of the air quality. It must have been canceled, because it was silent.
Yeah.
Right. And they weren't the only one that had that happen, you know.
Well, we've had storms, there's so many rescheduling, there's the M1 event, of course, that's Pontiac, but so they had to reschedule, and unfortunately.
And this would make it so that even if it's, whether it's all three or two of three, it would be able to quickly be rescheduled and not have to wait two more weeks to come back. But Martin, clerk Brooke will be bringing that before us.
Right, hopefully the next meeting.
And, and hopefully, you know, part of, I think this is really more to the community, because I think we know this, but state law mandates certain windows to allow fireworks. And, you know, sensitive, but, but then communities can have ordinances that don't override, I guess, the, the state law. So I, I think, given what this couple spoke about tonight, to the extent that we can also look again at our ordinance and see if there's anything that we can fine-tune, because we do get a lot of calls, and it's very bothersome to some people, especially elderly people. It can be confusing, animals, you know, get, it's, it's, it's pretty disruptive. But they have the right to do it per the state, but we have the right to regulate it within reason, within those timeframes. And so I think we'll look at it in that context, because I can surely sympathize with what happened there and-
An hour and a half's a long time.
Yeah. And to have that kind of spray all over your property just doesn't seem-
Correct.
-to be reasonable or fair, so.
I, I support looking at whatever we can do in that regard, but we are severely tight, amped strong by the state.
Yep.
Also, though, I am aware that several legislators are talking about amending the state law to restore local control-
Oh.
-on this issue. So that's the place where folks should really go, because we're, we're tightly controlled by what we can do and can't do by the state, so there might be an opportunity to, to return these matters to local control if we get enough action, you know, community comment to your legislators.
That'd be great. So if there's any questions about the fireworks display, if not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by clerk Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have to consider the approval of the easement agreement between the charter township of Bloomfield and the Bloomfield Hills School District for an elections dropbox at Eastover Elementary. And clerk Brooke?
Okay, I'm excited really to talk about this. We installed a dropbox outside here at Township Hall last year. It wasn't required, but we did that as an, you know, effort to continue to expand access. We've always, for many years, I don't even know for how long, but there's been a dropbox available at Township Hall in the front vestibule twenty-four hours a day for ballot materials during elections. It's also used for other materials as well. Last year, November twenty-three, proposal two passed, which requires additional dropboxes in, in all communities, and for them to be geographically dispersed around the community. We are required by this constitutional amendment to have three dropboxes in total. This is a easement agreement for one of those dropboxes. And the Township Clerk's Office and the Bloomfield School District has collaborated on elections for a very long time. Many of our precincts are in school buildings. They're great to work with. I brought this up to superintendent Watson, you know, many months ago now, and he was super enthusiastic about doing even the more they could do to support elections and democracy in Bloomfield Township. So here we have one of those things that, that was discussed. We've gotten to the point where we can bring it to this board now. The agreement will be brought to the Bloomfield Hills School District Board Thursday. I'll be attending that meeting. But this would be placing a, a dropbox on the current property of the, you know, Eastover Elementary School. On the, the map that's on the, the screen here, you can see that it's right next, the building that's next to it is one of the fire stations. A camera will be, a line will be drawn from that building to place a camera at the box. The little blue square is the box itself. It'll be a drive-up box that people can come in and, and drop the, you know, the ballot or the application into the box and circle back around. The bottom corner right there is, is, you know, is a picture of where this is at in the township. So you can see it's, it's, it's covering the northeast part of the township, folks that have really the long, you know, perhaps the longest drive to Township Hall, if they wanted to bring the, the application or the absentee ballot to, to us or use the dropbox here. So this is a really great spot for the east side of the township. I'm thrilled that the, the, the school administration has supported this and gotten it this far, and I hope the school board will be adopting it as well on Thursday. This is an easement agreement that has been worked out between the attorneys of the school district and our attorneys. Dirk in particular has been involved. The agreement is, is met with the approval of attorneys from both sides. It allows us to, a construction easement, to do the cement work required to place it there and put the bollard in and to, and to do electrical and, and cable to the camera, and then for an ongoing use, only to be terminated in the event of the property being sold. We would receive advanced notice of that in accordance to the contract, should they proceed to sell it, because we'll have to find another spot for a dropbox pretty quickly. The matter has been reviewed by and approved by the election commission. So about two weeks ago, Mr. Showstak and Mr. Barnett and I met and reviewed this in detail, and it was, it received the support of the election commission for a box at this location. The other box, by the way, is presently planned for being placed at the village hall in Bloomfield Village. So that'll going to cover the sort of center-south part of the, of the community, and that'll be the, that'll give us four in total technically, but two of them are on township property right here, so I'm just really counting that as one because of the requirement to distribute them geographically around the, around the community. So we're required, again, in a quick review, to have three boxes. There will be an election, by the way, this November. The Bloomfield Hills School District is putting a, calling a special election, so we need them in place for a November election. And that means operable before the end of the summer, really, because we've got to, you know, people could be putting election material in it as early as late September. And it's got to, you know, again, besides thanking the, the school district for their collaboration so far and hopeful approval of this, it's, you know, we've worked here with supervisor Walsh and many of her team, from, from IT to DPW to, you know, HRC, the engineer, engineering consultants, and to come up with this and do all that's necessary to have a, a legal easement agreement. So I think that's it. Any, any questions about it?
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Great job. From a security standpoint, how often, how, how long will the cameras be on? Is it only during elections, or if you could just talk a little bit about the security, who monitors the cameras?
Well, the camera will be, you know, it's operating all the time. When we're not in an election period, the, the boxes, the two things happen, it's one, one, it's locked, and two, it's then covered and locked. And we're required to visit it at least once every day to check its security of the box and functionality of the box, any, every day that we're open for business, and to empty it every day as we approach election day, and to send two people to do that as well. So it'll be under surveillance with the camera, and we'll be checking it visually during election period, at least every day that we're open.
Thank you.
I think you did a great job explaining that. I had questions, and you covered them all.
Oh, cool.
My questions were, you know, how many, and I can't remember the other one, but you covered it, so thank you.
Great. Now, there are costs, of course, we've been fronting, but the state is supposed to reimburse us for all the required costs associated with a dropbox. It appears that we'll be spending about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars overall on this, from engineering to the box itself, to the camera, to the electrical, and, and there's so many moving parts so quickly, there's not an application yet to the state to, to fill out for us to get reimbursed, but the statutes that are pending for the governor's signature, I don't think she's signed them yet, contain the, you know, provisions that implement the proposal, which, constitutional proposal, which requires that the state pay for the dropboxes. And the box itself is, you know, only about twenty-three-hundred dollars, so most of it is the other work.
Well, it's got to be installed and secured with a camera.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Oh, and I have some particular language, too, that Dirk and I worked out for a motion.
For the motion?
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would, I'd make the motion. So it says to approve the easement contract in substantially the same form as presented and authorize the township clerk and supervisor to execute the contract and to obtain any necessary insurance. It's written this way because literally this came together, the last questions were insurance-related, and we are on the same page, but it was a very fast-moving item that was, you know, worked on even up till midday today. And I don't anticipate any changes, but it does give us a little flexibility in case there's a, an issue that comes up on Thursday, we can still make it happen. By the way, as, as far as insurance, there, we came to an agreement on insurance, that was the last sort of topic that was of, of question, and present insurance that the township has and the, and the contractor who will be doing the work will meet the school district's requirements without additional cost to us or the contractor.
Great. If you need support.
Mr. Mike, clerk Brooke?
And also just commend you, Martin, and everyone else who's worked on it, because it would, came together so quickly, and the legislation is pretty recent to, so to be able to put this together in such a quick way, in a very professional way, especially with an election coming up, so it's very, very much noticed.
Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thanks, everybody.
So next, we have-
Report back on what the school district does.
Great. Next, we have consider entering a closed session pursuant to MCL six, nope, sorry, fifteen-point-two-six-eight-one-H to discuss material exempt from discussion by disclosure by state and federal statutes, specifically an attorney-client privilege written legal opinion. Do we have a motion to-
So moved.
-enter a closed session? Motion by clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. I'm, will do a roll call.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Faqui?
Yes.
Ms. Keeps?
Yes.
I'm yes as well?
And I'm a yes.
Okay.
So we will, we will definitely be back, and we'll see you soon. We're going to come back into session now, and we have next on the agenda, sorry, at nine fifteen, nine sixteen, coming back into session. And we're next on the agenda is to consider the motion to authorize legal counsel, oh, sorry, yes, legal counsel to proceed as disclosed in the closed session.
And I have a motion that I want to make with, at this point, for this item fifteen, which is a motion to approve agreement as recommended by legal counsel and to authorize supervisor Walsh to sign the appropriate documents.
Support.
Motion by clerk Brooke. Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, we have approval for the payroll and vouchers for July tenth. We've all had a chance to look them over. If there's any changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by treasurer Keeps.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and our last motion.
I move, we adjourn.
Motion by clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you in two weeks. Or wait, this is an extra week.